License or renewal.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the agenda minutes and counts payable as presented.
And I second it.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda minutes and counts payables. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. You're up, Julie.
Julie Laurie slash.
Well, I'm gonna take this off.
So you can breathe?
Yeah. Um, first of all, I'll just tell you a little bit about flu vaccine. We still have some flu vaccine in our refrigerator that we would like to get out to citizens in Mills County. Um, we have some free.
Three of them here, you could have done three or four.
I would have been happy to. Have you guys not had your flu shot?
I haven't yet, but I would love to.
I'm going to high V to get my 20 cents in cash.
We have some vaccine that's free for ages nineteen through sixty-five, a few doses. And then also, we have some vaccines still available, sixty-five and older. Um, we have probably ten doses of vaccine for kids, um, six months through eighteen, and they have to qualify. So they have to be on Medicaid. They have to have no insurance. So we're trying to get those. It's not doing any good in the refrigerator.
What'd you say, nineteen to sixty-four? And what's the next group?
Um, sixty-five and over, we can bill Medicare. So sixty-five and over, we can bill Medicare. Nineteen through sixty-four, I have like probably fifteen doses of free vaccine. And then the kiddos, um, age, um, six months through, um, through eighteen.
There's some in our fridge if you want to use water.
My wife wanted to hear your updates. Okay if I call her, FaceTime her?
Sure.
Oh, no, I could have. You wanna listen to this? All right. Just don't interrupt the meeting or you're, you're gone. We'll send the sheriff out.
Um, so this past week, we had a hundred and twenty-nine cases increased for a total of nine hundred and eighty cases. Um, our positivity rate, the fourteen day positivity rate yesterday was twenty-four point one. It's slowly creeping down, um, at least for this week. I think with Thanksgiving, it's hard to tell what's gonna happen. We did have.
Nine hundred and eight was just new ones from the week?
Ninety, nine hundred and eighty total.
Three hundred and twenty-nine.
Hundred and twenty-nine was the last.
New confirmed cases, okay.
Yes. So, um, we had two additional deaths in the past week, so.
Just recently.
Did those, any of those had pre-existing conditions or can you say?
Um, I cannot say for sure. When we are, we are no longer, because we are not doing the contact tracing for the community, we don't get a lot of information, for example, people who are hospitalized.
Sure.
We don't have a list. We used to keep a, a list and keep track of those people and call the hospital and see how they're doing and everything, and we can't do that anymore because we don't know who's in and who's not.
Okay.
Um, as far as the, um, the deaths, the hospitals call us and gives, give us general information as far as when they passed away, how long they've been there, and their age. But they don't give us a whole lot of other information.
Sure.
They've, um, changed the, the computer program that we've been using from, um, what was called IEDS, the Disease Surveillance System, to Domo, because it was just.
Domo?
Domo.
Domo.
Because the IEDS was just getting overwhelmed and it was, they thought it was getting ready to crash. So in the middle of all of this, we are having to learn a new computer program. And part of that is, they had, they don't have the kinks worked out of it yet. And so we can't get into some of the, we can't get into cases to, to see information like we used to. So they're working on that. They're working on that. So, um, and you can see also the zip codes. Most of the cases are in the Glenwood area. Um, and then Malvern is, is second, but, but really the majority are, are here in Glenwood area. Um, also, you'll see that the majority of the cases are in the middle age, so adult, you know, nineteen through fifty-nine. Um, that's just the majority. We are having.
Bring me a water.
We, we have, um, a fair share of kids, um, especially high school age kids, but, um, the most of them are in the, the adult age. Now, um, schools, Glenwood School has, um, gone virtual. They're supposed to return to the classroom on Monday, the thirtieth. We'll see, we'll see what they decide. Ultimately, it's up to them what they're going to go.
It's not set in stone?
It's not set in stone, but, but, I mean, that's the plan right now. Um, when, when they went virtual, um, it was, there was a week that, what happens is, yes, these, these cases that we report on come through the system, but a lot of them, we get heads up before they come through the system. I mean, we, we might, the school nurse might call, or administration might call, or the parents might call, or whoever calls and let us know, this, this kid is, you know, is positive, or this parent is positive, or whatever. And, and then we can act on it quicker than when it comes through the system. So the week we can have before everything kind of blew up at the school, we were getting so many calls, we could not, we, meaning the nurses in the, in our nursing department, we, the phone was just blowing up. We couldn't keep up with phone calls. I would have talked to one person and have five other messages that I had to call back. I mean, it was just a nightmare. And I think, you know, we, when, at that point with schools, we had to confer with the, with the Iowa Department of Public Health, with the Department of Ed. Um, and the decision was made by the school to go virtual. Uh, they've kind of relaxed some of those standards now that we don't have to go through all those steps to go virtual now, so.
Do you think that part of the reason the cases are going down is because people are testing?
I think, um, we are, the test numbers are high. I mean, the test numbers are showing that we are testing, you know, throughout Iowa, six thousand people a day. There was a time when it was hard to get a test. Um, it's easier now. I think people are, are not testing as quickly. Um.
Is rapid the only option in the local now?
No. You can test at Test Iowa. Test Iowa is not rapid.
It's still up, it's plus up there.
Well, I thought they said that they, it's not, the sign isn't up and it isn't there anymore.
You know, they, they were moving sites.
Yeah, relocate.
Okay, I was gonna say.
I think for the winter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So Amy is suggesting Steve to go to called eighty-eight med, which you get it in ten, twenty minute checkup results.
Yep.
And then somebody said, that's just not, that's not a good accurate.
That's a rapid test and.
Is that a fifty-fifty type of thing?
It depends on, if you are symptomatic, it's more accurate. So the more symptoms you have, the more accurate it's going to be. So if he is pretty symptomatic, then I would say, yes, it's an option. If he has no symptoms, if he's just testing because he wants to be sure, then it's not, it's going to be about that fifty to sixty percent accurate. So I would not really recommend it if he does not have symptoms.
Okay.
So, yeah, he needs a PCR, which is.
Is the rapid testing the same down up the nose and make you gag your big toe up?
Yeah, there are some places that go clear up, yeah. And then there's other places that just do a nasal swab, which is just inside the nose, and there's other places that do a throat swab. So everybody's, every place is a little bit different.
Yeah, and kids, they let them do a spit thing, don't they?
They, I, no, I'm not sure where, but yes, there is the potential that that's going to be starting. We, to my knowledge, don't have that here in the area yet.
It's in Des Moines, because it was someone from up in the Des Moines area that got to do that.
They.
Just spit and they can tell they're kids, yeah, so they're.
Yeah. They're, they're hoping to get some testing in the schools so that to, and more rapid testing, so these kids aren't out of school so, so long.
So when we get that COVID vaccine, are we gonna line up at the school like we were little, get Napoleon sugar cube and?
Well, vaccine. So vaccine, we are planning for Mills County's, um, for when we get vaccine. To start with, it's phased. And to start with, it will be, um, healthcare providers. Um, then it will go to long-term care. It'll go, so it'll be a phased approach. Um, right now, we are, we're looking at a couple different areas here in Mills County to, um, to set up a pod for when it becomes public. And we will go through the public health office. Um, we're gonna do it a couple different ways. First of all, the, um, the vaccine for healthcare providers, um, like, we will coordinate with different offices and they will receive their shipment directly, okay? The nursing homes will be, for their law, for their residents will be getting, um, vaccine and from, um, some pharmacies that have contracted, contracted with the federal government. Um, CBS and, um, what was the other one? Walgreens, yes. Will be coming into Mills County and delivering, um, vaccine to our long-term cares. Um, GRC has opted out of that. They're going to give their own. Um, so we have, so we're gonna have a different, basically, the nursing homes will be receiving from the, from the pharmacies. We're going to be coordinating, making sure that different offices and different pharmacies have vaccine. And then we're also going to be doing some public clinics. We're looking at, do you remember when we did H one N one, we used the Catholic Church Hall, Hoffman Hall? We're also looking at the Chaplain Building. Um, our long-term, our pod, our pod, um, plan also uses a couple of the different schools in the county. So we have some options. Larry, if you want me to go into detail with, so.
I'm not sure the planning is finished, because there's still the planning, we're still working on this.
So.
I think, I think a lot of this, it's all dependent on the amount and when it comes, you know, down, and how the state phases it out to the public health. And then the collaboration with, then the collaboration with the, uh, with the clinics. You know, the, uh, the people that have to sign, you know, the doctors, offices, clinics have to sign up to participate in this. And I think the issue will be itself, and that following this criteria, it's put out by the federal government, the CDC and the states, than anything else. And that's kind of what Lori's talking about here, this little bit, is, uh, it's important that it's triaged and put out properly initially when the first batch comes in, because then the tracking starts, because then you got that second shot. It's those people that are administered by their doctor, by the clinic, by the public clinic is gonna have to be followed up on.
It is a two-shot process. All of them are two-shot processes.
My knowledge, they are all two-shot. There's some that are ultra-frozen and we probably will not receive that. That is a twenty-one day in between. Um, and the others are twenty-eight days, from what I understand. So it's a matter of, um, recalling and getting people back. It's gonna be hard enough to get people there once, but getting people back for the second shot is going to be. Yeah, so we're in the, we're in the process of, we're doing a lot of contact tracing with the schools. Um, and we're also trying to do all of this pod planning and getting ready for what's to come and, you know, and hopefully the near future. They keep saying, you know, at first it was, we had to be ready by November first, and then it was by November fifteenth, and then it was December first. I mean.
I was surprised.
I.
That they can't put it in.
Is it fever?
Well, it's the F, the FDA, part of it.
Yeah.
But the one company, if I read the papers, is, is trying to push forward here pretty hard. The other company, I really, I think, well, the two major companies, there's others probably buying from this federal government, but they are, the other one's close to dying today. And, and, and Lori, missing this ultra-frozen, we're concerned about, we got that, you know, handling of that, because it has to be, it is, it's super cold to handle it, and you gotta be able to store it like that, maintain, um, you know, the effectiveness of it and everything. So that's why I think Lori said we may get this other, which will be a little bit longer gap between the first and the second dose, which, you know, it may be easier to track that. I don't know.
You're not buying rice every day either.
We have to, and, and they're telling us that the state do not prepare. If you do not have, um, freezer space for this ultra-frozen stuff, don't go out and get it. Um, I think they're thinking that is going to be specific areas. I, I wanna say like the University of Iowa and some different places that have this already in place. So, yeah. They said, don't go out and try to get a contract with, with, um, somebody that has COVID. So, anyway, um, what else? What else?
Just the, you know, the, if you notice in the sheet, that last week, two weeks ago, we reported two twenty, which is a market increase. And that was a big shot up. And then this week, it's down, seventy-seven down. But, you know, I can't be intestated that, that serves. The peaks and valleys of this apparently. And I think we're gonna have to watch this over the next couple of weeks to see what this number today really means. I think, I think that the school, the Glenwood district especially, make the decision to, to partially suspend, then go virtual eventually. And, uh, and also sports, trying to clean, you might say cleanse, the system a little bit if the students evade that, which, you know, I've seen some of that not being necessarily evade, but that's normal, you know, kids are kids, right? And adults are adults. But, uh, I think it's something that the school is serious about undoubtedly. And they want, they wanna get an equal chance to get back, and hopefully.
They wanna get back to school.
They wanna get back to school.
Yeah. There's, I think there will be a, I think our numbers are going to drop over the next week. Because of, um, Thanksgiving, um, numbers tested are gonna be lower. The test sites, the test sites are gonna be closed for a few days. Um, the lab's gonna be closed for a few days. So you're gonna see a little bit of a drop. Um, I know, and also, I think that we're gonna see a drop here in Mills County because Glenwood schools are closed right now. Um, even though you're seeing kids out and about, I think there's less testing going on, and I think there's probably less positives right now. Um, I know overnight, we had, I, I believe it was eight cases from yesterday to today, so, um, which is a lot lower. It's been twenty-three. I mean, we've just, they've just been coming fast and furious, and overnight, it's like, okay, it's, it's only eight today. So that's a good thing. So.
We're still seeing use cases. We're still seeing use cases. They're, they're showing up. And I think some of that is a little delayed, because, um, when I see it, and we see it on the spreadsheet, we're at the positivity date. You know, uh, when we finally got it back, it came through the system and gets to us, there is a little timeline there, you know, from when they, when the, when the actual mark was, they were tested and it came back positive, or when it.
Contact tracing is still behind at the state level. Um, significantly behind. And we are, the only thing that we're doing to combat that at the local level is that we are taking phone calls. We are giving guidance. Um, when people call us, um, people call us, if they find out that they're positive, they call us for guidance. Um, also, the kids at the school, they were called, and then we reach out to them to give them guidance, to give the parents guidance.
So when somebody lies in the hospital and they test positive, is it up to the family to call you? Or is there a member in the hospital that is supposed to contact you?
The only, the only time the hospital calls us is when somebody passes away. Otherwise, we don't get notified of hospitalizations. So.
And did they cancel completely wrestling?
No.
Okay.
No. Um, practices, from what I understand, practices in Glenwood start again Wednesday. Um.
On the Monday, on the thirtieth.
Um.
That's scary.
Practices, activities are starting Wednesday.
It was in the paper, church. Where's the girls' church is on the thirtieth, that's why I wanted to say.
That's what I just, my understanding is, it's Wednesday. And East Mills is hanging in there, do, they're doing okay. I think they started their mask mandate, uh, well ahead of, um, Glenwood, and so I think it is showing that it is helping. Um, I'm more, I'm concerned about wrestling and basketball, though. I, it's, it's gonna be hard.
You talk about contact.
Yeah. And they've been giving guidance, you know, both Glenwood and East Mills have been giving guidance. But there's only so much you can do, so. Questions? Do you have anything else?
No, I think, um, as far as PPE, of course, the EMS providers, uh, they're going to the hotspots in the county right now for the calls are burning through it, of course. Um, availability's a little bit better on it. They still gotta hunt for it and get a better price. There's still, there's still a little, I'm not gonna say it's price gouging, but there's still a little bit of expense there. Um, trying to keep out of the stocks best you can. State, as I told you last week, set up this logistic cell here in the western Iowa for us to go through the state still, but then we have a shorter distance to go. Basically, they'll get your own instead of bringing it to you, uh, to kind of shorten the timeline if they have the stuff in stock that you need. So we'll see how that pans out over the next three days and, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we're not out of the woods yet, and I think we all have to agree, we don't know, we don't know when that is. I don't think anybody knows when that is, but it's vaccine, hopefully will, will get more widely available. People will get the vaccine, some probably won't, but the majority will. And, um, we'll get everybody the first dose, second dose, and hopefully it'll give us a high level of protection. And maybe we'll start to snuff this out a little bit. It's just like the flu, you can take the, I think this is different than a flu shot, because this is a vaccine that is similar to what we got when we were little kids, you know, certain types of things that they were trying to eradicate, diseases, viruses.
Well, your, your years of little, you know, little kid, the rest of us is a whole other world.
It was the red stuff on the sugar cube at the NASCAR Army. You know, a little kid went down and, uh, got TB.
Sugar cube. I remember that.
And, uh, and everybody was there in line and did it.
I was, I am.
I think those days, we're trying to experience that a little bit now, is to get something that's going to hopefully attack this and provide a low immunity, um, a recurrence or just getting it, and I think that's what we need to do.
How long are they saying the vaccine will last? Is there any numbers yet?
They don't say.
It's hard to test something that you haven't given out yet, but.
But you, I mean, you look at H one N one, H one N one is in every year's flu shot now. So, I mean, that, in my mind, it could be the.
Yeah, that will.
So, I mean, it could be that COVID might have to be in every year's flu shot, yeah. Yeah, it's, I don't think they know. I think that, I do know that they are, as they're testing it, they're also shipping it. So it will be in our state, ready to be shipped out to locals, um, as soon as they get the okay, that it's, um, that it's good to go. So it, it will be in our state way before, um, the final okay. So it'll be, so, once they say okay, I think it'll be shipped out within a day. I really do. I think they, they'll.
Really get TP or get it all out. Come here, think about it. To every person in this country.
In the world?
In the world.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
We have, um, webinars every week, um, with, for local public health. The state, um, gets us on and kind of goes over what they've done for the week with, with the vaccine and also other things that are going on, but we always have a section on what's going on with the vaccine. And they're always telling us, you know, okay, this is, you need to do this, and you need to do this, and you need to do this. So, I mean, they're preparing. They seem far more organized than we are, than we are. But we're just, I mean, it's like we're taking directions step by step instead of a whole plan. And, and it's hard to, to implement what you don't know what's gonna happen, so it's hard to know. So, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
We're hanging here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope Julie will be back next week.
Yes.
Some love and good time off.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
Hi, John, how are you?
Good. How are you guys?
Yeah, there was nothing wrong with that truck at all. It was just, you know, I heard, I'm pumping gas, and I look out, and I hear, you know, diesel loud track, and I look over, and I'm like, boy, that thing's ugly, you know? And he takes off, and he catches a gear, and through three gears, he's not even through the intersection yet. It just, it just looked tired, you know? It was probably tired by when they gave it to us.
That's what I was gonna say.
Right. Right.
They were used up.
Was that one of our trucks?
State truck.
Oh, state truck.
Our state truck.
Yeah, we have two of them, and we used one on two hundred and twenty-first Street, which is a little heavier, heavier plow, you know? Trying to make sure we clean it a little bit better, so.
It's definitely a bigger truck, and you can tell that. I mean, it's got some meat to it.
But, yeah, well.
And could you explain, what are they building, that little building right when you go, get over the viaduct, the, on thirty-four, on the right-hand side? It's the neatest little building.
Thirty-four, we're at.
Right there, close to where you take a left to go to the Vinton's, right-hand side, down in the.
Oh, that's our sewer, we're, we're lifting our sewer, uh, our pumps.
Oh, yeah.
For the, it's, that's how we get the sewer, the sewage from the rest area, Love's, Lincoln's.
Oh, it's ill.
To PJ, through PJ to our plant. Lift station.
Got it.
What a short answer.
Bigger pumps or just?
They flooded in the shop.
I'm guessing they are elevated.
We're flood-proofing. Yeah, it's a retaining wall we're gonna build up.
Oh, it's a nice retaining wall.
Instead of having them under the ground, we're gonna have them up a year above, foot above the flood level that was there. And then we'll have access to them.
Mitigated.
Yeah, that's a, that's.
Mitigation. Well, they're doing, I mean, it's a nice little building or whatever, and I went.
It's, those are just retaining walls, tightening the donuts.
Yeah, yeah. Looks really nice.
They'll fill it, and then.
Got it.
The pipes will still be there.
Okay.
The sewers will come in through that into PJ. All, all of the sewage from PJ West and North runs through all of that into PJ, through PJ system, which GMU now owns.
So you're telling me every house has a pump that it pushes it?
Grinder pump?
Every house in PJ.
PJ knows.
Every house and PJ.
Most of them in the bottom do. I mean, because it's all force made.
Sure.
I don't know that there's any gravity out there.
I doubt it, just because.
Yeah, I don't think there is. So for the rest area now, it's all pumped and burst.
They're doing a nice job. I mean, it looks nice.
Well, I don't have a lot today for official action. Actually, no official action, but, uh, no. No utility permits, uh, report.
Spending money too.
So.
None?
And a general discussion, I do have a couple items. Uh, I think we talked about this piece of property that the county owns previously on two hundred and twenty-first Street, across from the cemetery.
My dad's backyard?
Yeah, backyard. Um, and I've talked with the attorney.
Refresh that before you, yeah.
I've talked with the attorney's office and, um, I think we know how, how to go about it. Since it is an unused piece of right-of-way, we do not have to vacate it. Um, and if the board, um, the board ceased to sell it, which, that would be my, um, suggestion.
He wants to buy it. Your side?
Lyle would, Lyle, Lyle would want an easement.
Yeah, so this guy has approached the office.
Yep.
Um, about, he wanted just to kind of buy a sliver of it, so he could do like a, something like this, just so he could build a fence, and he's got a couple of dogs, I guess, and, and wanted to be able to still have access through that drive.
Yep.
And they, we don't have to offer it for sale if, because we.
Well, you've got, you've got two, you've got three different landowners, possibly four. Lyle's shed is here, and he has no way to get back to it because of the retaining walls. So Lyle comes in here, has an easement, and Jim D's own this house, he has an easement through here to get to the shed. So Lyle uses this. This guy uses it once in a while, even though Dad owns this piece now, because Jim owned it three and clear. So Lyle gave Jim an easement through here, and Jim gave Lyle an easement through here. So both of these houses use this, but this is still an open public street. Pittsburgh addition, this was all planted.
How did that happen?
Yeah, well, they, they hated all of Pittsburgh addition here except this, and they did Gateway.
Gotcha.
And this was left open. The city wanted it open at the time, even though they didn't own it. Because it's not, it's, city limits is all here, but not here.
You can see that, you can see that city limit, purple line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, why are we concerned?
That house, that house, that house, that house.
The city limits is around you, but this is not the city limits. It's, it's an island.
Yeah, those five.
That is crazy.
Five residences are.
Well, the city never annexed it.
And, and, uh, this person.
They should have.
Has livestock.
What? Livestock?
They do, they hang chicken, dead chickens from their clothesline when they're cleaning. They do, they hang chicken, dead chickens from their clothesline when they're cleaning them and killing them.
Yeah, and that's uh, that's my background.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
The chickens and the cows, I think they have like one.
They wanted a farm.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, Dottie likes her own chickens in the backyard.
Oh, I bet she's.
And I think they breed raccoons too.
You don't have to breed them, there's plenty of them.
Three.
Why isn't the city annexed?
I think, I think that's how they keep them from annexing, because livestock on the property.
No.
No.
He just said, it's like a highlight.
By the city limits, but it's not in the city limits.
Five residences are county.
It's hard to annex something when you're not contiguous, but they are contiguous, it's a, it just needs done. But the, those people don't want it because of the higher taxes, so you need the eighty-twenty. So, you need a Glendale or a Gate, not Gateway, a Broadmoor or something. This ground across the street of, oh, that's already in the city, no, it's not. Cemetery is, but uh, mentals is not. You need a mental to condense, so you can suck them in on the eighty-twenty.
I cannot get over that.
Versus non-voluntary.
But uh, following Iowa Code three oh six, uh, there is directions on how to sell unused right-of-way, so we wouldn't have to vacate it, I believe, and I think the attorney agrees with me. And uh, basically, it's, it's a pretty well-spelled-out process of how we do that. We, we uh, get an appraisal from an independent appraiser, and then we send a letter out to all adjacent landowners. So, to be, for them, well.
Well, three.
Three, because here, here.
Lyle.
Lyle.
Yep.
And, in that letter, it says who we sent, oh, and also to who we, who donated the land, so Pitzer. So, we send a letter, say, this is what, it was appraised value, this is who else got a letter. You have sixty days to submit an offer, and that was about it. And then if.
So, how does that work? Let's say all three of them want a piece of that.
We sold his one, we sold his one property.
As one?
Uh huh.
So, let's say in the back, Lyle got it, so the other two, which are right beside it, they can't drive on it.
It would be private property.
It would be an easement.
Property, there would have to be an easement. If, if, if one of the neighbors got it, then, then Lyle would, we would still have to retain an easement for him because he uses it.
And so, easements, easements continue on.
So, the.
Any parcels.
Yeah, the, the, the Duncan, if he got it, they would own it, but Lyle will still have the right to drive in.
They have to give him an easement.
And Duncan's already done a little legwork, apparently he talked to Lyle.
Has he, he hasn't talked with Dad about it?
And, and he said that, yeah, they, uh, the one guy in the northern really wanted, uh, and with Lyle, was just wanted an easement, and he had seen a problem with that, so. Uh, I guess, what it comes down to, I need, I need to get the ball rolling, because I need to get a copy of the deeds. I don't have, Richard, um, he's quarantined for two weeks, so, so, I just need to go down to the quarters office. That's something I've never done, doesn't get, but I can do that.
I'll write them down here for you now, and you can just tell them.
Oh, I, I know, I know the books and pages. Richard's done that for me.
Yeah, 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 she can.
And then uh.
Put those out for you quick.
Uh, then I get a, get an appraiser.
Right, yeah.
Can't imagine it'd be too hard.
No.
No.
So, what's these acres long from to the road back?
Oh, I thought that was, gosh, I measured it. It was under an acre. It was like point seven eight.
This piece? Yeah, I don't know.
I think it's point seven eight, is, one time I measured it. So, as long as the board, I have to get the board approval too, to sell, um, but.
Yeah, since it's county.
I can't imagine you get, I don't see any need for it. So, uh, I guess I just need to make an action item, probably, for approval to sell.
That little spot is.
Parcel.
And then go continue with the process.
It's need to clean up for years. There hasn't been anything annexed up there, other than, when, when Jim did uh, Gateway, it wouldn't meet the eighty-twenty. Your books and pages. I printed them out for you while you're here.
This is your one subservice.
So, that's, that's a little bit of a discussion. I'll bring an action item for approval to sell that parcel, and I get all the legal descriptions and stuff.
And we haven't gotten taxes on it, right?
Correct. On actual.
Oh, my gosh, will I make a motion for?
Well, we don't, we don't have an action item right now. I, I will bring it.
Oh, got it. When you get all the paperwork done, got it, sorry.
Well, other general discussion, um, currently have four guys out quarantining, um, whether they have it or have close contact, so this is the most we've ever had at one time. We've gone through a couple, um, through the last eight months, or whatever it's been, uh. Which kind of leads me to brush cutting this, this winter, um, or hauling rock, or doing normal rock operations and maintenance. We don't have a problem keeping separated, um, social distancing, but brush cutting really involves three or four guys getting a pickup, driving out to where they're going, and the one, you know, our brush clearing equipment also being run out there. To avoid having three or four guys in a pickup, I kind of looked at a couple options. We either have them take their dump trucks out there, and try and find a place to park nearby where they're cutting brush, which, you know, it, I know people don't like it when we park a big dump truck in the farm field, or farm entrance, or driveway. Um, or maybe we let them take out their personal vehicle. Um, and I'm sure then they'll want mileage reimbursed, so. Me and, me and the foreman have talked about it, and, and we kind of we, we haven't come to a decision, and, and so, we're just trying to figure out what would be the best way to go about it, keep people safe, but also.
So, Corey, if you would call the, the landowner or the farmer, and just explain to them, and say, could, because of this situation, don't you think they would let them?
I would think so.
I do too. I can't imagine we're that small and naive that we would let our county trucks park in their driveway.
It's also gonna look a little silly if we have three, three dump trucks parked.
Yeah, but.
For the, trying to keep social distance, you know, and trying to keep people from riding the same vehicle together in case somebody does come back from a positive test, now we have three, four guys out for, for two weeks, so. Would it be, would you guys be okay if we do allow them to use personal vehicles occasionally?
I would rather have them use a dump truck. With shoe money?
Oh. Uh, you gotta keep this peace, um.
Would they wanna use their personal?
We gotta talk to the guys about it, it's just been discussions at the foreman and myself.
I mean, they're on the clock. Would they, would they want reimbursed for everything?
I would think so, so.
Sure they would.
Probably.
But it's, it shouldn't be, it should be in two trips, at the most, if they go out, then go to lunch, and go back. I mean, talking fifteen, twenty miles in a day.
For a guy.
For a guy.
For how long?
Fifty cents, I don't know.
Yeah.
Fifty-two.
I would be somewhat against it, but I would, I'm open.
Are we, how many pickups do we have?
We have about, well, not counting the foremans, we have, we have three.
We need to use the foremans for a couple days, or.
Uh, and, and I, and we talked about letting them use our inspector vehicle or, or survey truck. We, we can give them one of those.
We only have three pickup pickups, and one would have to take a dump truck.
Yeah, but, but we have, we have three brush cutting crews of fifteen people almost, so. Yeah. But we're, we're just kind of trying to figure out what, what's the best way to stay socially distanced, but uh.
I, otherwise, if there gets to be a dent or.
That's a worry.
That's a worry.
Any kind of liability.
When they get, yeah, that, that's what scares me more than anything, they get in a car wreck, um.
Then the county has to buy a car, not.
What kind of an agreement are we gonna have to have with them? You don't let the guys patrol in their own personal cars, do you?
I would think we'd have to talk to the insurance company too, to see what our.
That's an insurance, county attorney thing.
Yeah. Try and see if we couldn't.
Yeah.
That would be my biggest concern. I mean, I.
That, it is.
Keeping the guy safe, hell yes, let's do whatever we can, but letting them use their personal vehicle to go from A to B during work hours. They're on the clock, are we leasing their trucks or cars, are we?
Or they ran over a stick, and you gotta ruin tires, so we gotta buy them a, four sets of tires.
They could just get out of hand quick, that's what scares me the most.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll keep looking at how to, how to stay socially distanced.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe. Maybe we can find a couple cheap pickups, I don't know.
Would you, the work pickup, right there, does not come in the work sheet, anywhere.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll figure it out some way, and if, I mean, if we have to take out dump trucks, we'll.
Okay, so here's my question, how far, how long would they be in a vehicle?
Fifteen minutes to get from the shop to the.
Six feet, fifteen minutes, close to six feet, both in masks. They say that's, uh.
They try.
That's what they say. I mean, that's, that's one way to look at it. In the olden days, have them right in the back, drop them off. I mean, we all were raised like that, right?
Put them in the back of the truck.
Yes, yeah, one on top, one in the back.
Just, just make sure.
And then drop them off, and by God, we're all alive. That is amazing. Corey, that's a good one, but I, I'd be leaving with the rest of the cars.
I, I understand that.
And I know you're up.
We're just looking at all options. Uh.
Hey, Corey?
Yes.
Corey, this is Richard.
Yeah.
Uh, have you checked with any other engineers, or see if they still, if they have this kind of problem?
No, I haven't. I, I will reach out.
Yeah, I appreciate you reach out, you know, and see what, I mean, you take a look at Pop County, how big they are, how they handle them, you know, they're still not quite comparable to Mills County, but you got Montgomery, and page pretty much, see what's going on there, okay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send out, I'll send out a uh, I use the service bureau website, and I can send out a message to all ninety-nine county. See if I get some good response.
That is a good question, do you do?
Uh, other general discussion, um, COVID, vacating. Uh, we're looking at getting a um, grapple for skid loader. Last year, we rented one, um, we actually have two, or we, we own one, and we rented another one. Uh, help with brush removal and stuff like that. Uh, rental last year was five hundred dollars a week. Um, I did. Uh, Evans, I believe.
A rental company?
It, it was a, it was Evans or, yeah, it had to have been Evans, because Cat didn't, we're, we're looking at Bobcat. Um, and, and so, Markland got a quote for what, what uh, purchased one, it was, it was right, right around three hundred, or three thousand three hundred dollars, and so, uh, we used it as much as we did last year, I think we used it for a couple weeks. It took just two or three years to pay it off, for what the rental was. Um, not looking for approval right now, but just something I may.
It's something you'll use.
It is definitely something we'll use, and.
Especially with your new brush rag and your suit.
Well, I tell you what, Steve's got one, and it, it, it's awesome. They.
Yeah.
Might bring that for approval.
That's something that you, you, you and Jared would both use.
Yeah, and I guess.
So, it may not hurt to bug Jared out and see if he can throw in a hundred bucks or something. Or see if he'd use it. I guarantee you, Jared, he's probably more than you.
Probably, because we, we really probably would use it mainly in the winter.
Right.
Take it out of his budget, and he'll rent it from you. There you go.
We're not gonna do the city thing. They wouldn't let that, they would, Perry wouldn't let the parks use it.
Yeah.
We're not doing that.
Uh, something, uh, I was, got a cold call or cold email from a salesman, he sells a map, and, and he sent me this, this uh, design for map with our logo, and I, I didn't know if county would be interested, and he told me we'd get a twenty percent discount if we had ordered eight or more. If uh, I sent him our new county logo, that, that uh,
Yeah.
We just got approved. If courthouse would be interested in, in purchasing a couple mats, um, we could use some new mats for our new building.
Any idea what it cost to be?
It would be, well, depends on the size, but I was looking at three by five, and it'd be a hundred and fifty-two dollars a piece.
Three by five?
That's not very big.
That's like a dormouse.
Yeah, you need something bigger.
Three feet.
What's the biggest they've got?
Five feet? Uh, they, they go up to four by six, they go to four by six.
And how much are four by six?
Well, hundred percent. Two hundred and fifty dollars.
And is there any break in how many you buy?
It, it has to be eight to get twenty percent off.
I ordered one from my office. I ordered one or two from my office.
I like that logo.
And I could find out if there'd be more of a discount if we got more than eight, but, but that's just kind of.
Yeah, it might.
Well.
I would, I would take three. I, I figured three in the engineer's office.
We could probably come up with eight.
I'm going to.
Can you give me some floor mats in the en- entryway? Huh?
I would do those.
Alright.
Well, I'm gonna send him a copy of the logo, so instead of this logo we found on our internet.
Right, yeah, he just copied our main page.
Do that, but, but then, uh.
I like the Porsche one, though, why don't you put that in your way?
Yeah, alright.
Can I see that quick? Might as well see the answer bank.
Oh, oh, good thinking.
Yeah, I'll talk to uh, once I get uh, an example of our new logo, I can talk to the other department heads, but.
I like that.
That'd be neat, uh.
I do, I like that.
Especially with a new logo.
Exactly.
Everybody has the same logo, it'd be. It'd be.
It'd be better if they come every week and clean them.
They will. For a small fee.
I'm sure.
Alright, that's, oh, Jeff Sale, um, could I drive again?
Can you drive? Well, I don't know.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
This is the only one you need here, the one that's circled. I couldn't, I couldn't find an image on our site or Iowa Land Records, so I'm not sure why. But that is there. Richard gave you the vid, the recording of Pitzer Edition, when it was planted, when it was vacated. Which is fine, I printed that too, but you need the book and page for the people that are involved in it, so. I got you Lyle's, I got you this guy's, just not this one, so when you go to the quarter, you only need one of them.
Awesome, thank you. Uh.
Send you a bill later.
Your check's in the mail.
Yes, yeah.
Um, we have some material storage that is on private land, that we've had for a decade or more, um, since the Roger sale, was the one that got the agreement initially. And it's nice to have the material storage down here, because uh, let's distance the hall for when we do seal coat. That's what, we keep our chips, seal coat chips there.
Yo, Corey.
And where's this at?
Yo, Corey in Malvern.
Right, right here, just south of Malvern.
Who's going there fighting in high school?
Uh, Jeff Sale and his sister Jill scored on it. Um, recently got called from, um, about a couple weeks ago from Jeff, saying, hey, my taxes have gone up. Um, I, I can't just let you guys store here for free anymore, and we worked out an agreement for rent. We'll do thrilled about it, um, but uh.
So, you understand.
We, we need it.
Where he comes from.
Because we're gonna seal coat. Because we're gonna seal coat till sixty-eight in the spring, early summer. So I, I agreed to pay for the rent until May, August, or May, June, when we're done. Um, but then after that, we're gonna be looking for somewhere else to sell material.
New piece of ground behind the engineer's office that we wanna buy.
It was a little bit in Malvern.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna, a little more centrally located. We we have.
I have an empty lot beside my house.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm sure they're free.
What do we do with the fairgrounds here? Do we, do we have any room there at all?
So we looked there a little bit, um, we don't really, uh. Something we thought, Tom and I were talking about was what about if we could get this little chunk from whoever, um, Chariot Farms.
Yeah.
You could definitely fit, uh, some material storage back here. It doesn't look like, I mean, what? That's a one point two acres. They probably have half an acre farm available. Um.
Oh, we use the west piece of that and cash rent the other one to three acres on the other side of the back door.
Maybe, uh.
To sell it.
We looked at that, um. We looked at. Uh. I really like this spot, but I don't know if we're allowed to because this is.
River access?
River access, that that wall, maybe we could, you know, do something over here, kind of build it up or do some material storage, but that is enough floodplain and, uh.
Good. Doesn't have much incentive to it. As long as you're storing, you're good. As long as you, as long as you don't put a structure up, you're all right.
So so that was something, we had to look at the hurdles for that.
We already own that.
Yeah, so that's what.
And that's what I was gonna say. Isn't there something that we own that we could put a little corner and?
We we do have another, we do have stone breaker where we already store material. Right here.
Twenty percent of that a year due to season.
Yeah, so this one, we we only store. We only store up there, uh. Yeah, Kevin told me a story about how he found.
And nobody seen anybody take anything.
Oh, we know where it goes.
And we can't press charges on that because we don't have. Can't catch them.
Well.
You got better things to do than.
Lonnie.
Sneak out a rock pad.
We only store there when we know we're gonna be using it soon.
Right.
Um. Well, so we're just trying to explore options and so if you ever hear anybody out near Malvern area, Hastings area.
I think that Robbins area with the river access would be good.
This is where we'd really like to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Would that be hard to get at?
Oh, no.
It would be.
It's right down, uh, Lambert.
Yeah.
What do they call that?
Bluegrass.
Bluegrass, there you go.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. And we're not talking.
I need to make sure that we can store in a floodplain.
Yeah, you should be able to. Yeah, as long as there's no structures, I don't think there's any restrictions on it.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is there people that's got new asphalt chip driveways?
We, when it first filed there, there was a neighbor that always had.
It was the the foundation of a building, of a shed or a farm.
Yeah, they used it for 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 a base.
That Kevin told me about.
Yeah.
Material matched.
How much more do you think, though? I mean, you rock a road and then all of a sudden someone's got a fresh driveway.
Nice, nice looking driveway.
At the end of the road there, you just. It happens. I mean, there's nothing you can do. Hire another fifty or sixty deputies to stand up there and.
Patrol.
Yeah.
So that's.
Play more rock.
That's all I have for today.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You guys have a good Thanksgiving.
Was it a big storm yesterday? Any irate people or was it pretty calm?
Never, didn't get any calls that I'm aware of. We were, we were a little slow going out, um, kind of caught us off guard, uh.
Well, I'm telling you, it let loose. It let loose.
So but we were, we were out there about eleven thirty or so, so, uh, it was a one pass day, so it didn't take us very long, although we were missing a couple.
Got slick right now. Yeah, Steve was going up by Denise Jen's Hill with a grain wagon and her car stopped right in front of him. She was spinning out. But he couldn't, he couldn't get out of the tractor because it was going back. It was just that hard slush. So. I, we think it's Brett Wilson and had stopped and tried to help, but I mean, he didn't have a chain or what, I don't see, so I don't know what he was trying to do. It got slick fast.
It did.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All righty, thanks, Corey.
I'm gonna send, I, not that you're in any hurry, but my friend who keeps shoving sketch flat, um, at me, um, brought me to yesterday, so I will.
I got another one, too.
Now you know who my friend is. Yeah, I told you, I said, now you know who my friend is. I'll I'll send him and send him.
I'll have them all filled out.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah, he has to do.
What's your biggest concern? Access and size?
Yeah, access and.
I'll take care of that.
No, I had to do a couple nine one ones permits yesterday.
I can't help you there, yeah, I don't, I've never done that.
Yeah, please tell me I'm doing this right.
Thanks, Corey.
Okay, cheers.
All right, Mr. Deputy, you're up.
Yeah. I don't know who wants paper.
I do.
You do?
I get it.
We're looking to hire Zachary Buttercase as a new deputy.
Buttercase, Fremont.
Fremont County, right?
Yep, certified deputy, uh, we don't have to send him to any school or anything.
Yay.
I've also talked with Sheriff Black Otter. He is on board with this as well, uh, wanting to get him on board with us, so.
Is there any stipulations on where they have to live for how close or anything?
Um, it's, in all honesty, it's, uh, the way the policy's set up, it's, uh, sheriff's discretion as far as it goes.
Oh, it is.
Uh, you know, I know we, right now, we've got Jordan Hofer who lives up at Lake Manawha, but we've got it mapped out. She's actually closer to the sheriff's office than if she actually lived in Henderson. And, uh, her husband's a DNR cop and they get a house at Manawha that he has to live at, so.
Easy enough.
I know, uh, when Goose approved it, it was, hey, you're actually closer to the sheriff's office than if you lived on the west or east side of the county, so it's still beneficial to us. Uh, Zap will have a six-month probation period since he's already a certified deputy. I think he starts out at fifty-two and some change.
Fifty-two, nine, fifty-three, for the contract. And he'll start eight, November thirtieth?
Yeah, tentative, last day of the month.
We like that they're already certified and he's ready to go.
Yeah.
Well, and good for him to start the day before so then his insurance kicks in a lot.
Exactly.
Oh, oh.
Employed on the first, then it kicks in sooner.
I think that's part of, part of the game plan.
Exactly, Buttercase.
All right, guys, what do you think?
I make a motion, let's hire him. For fifty-two, nine, five, three. You'll with us, Richard?
I'll second.
Okay.
We've got a motion and a second to approve Mr. Buttercase as a new deputy hire. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fire away, buddy.
Bring him in.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
See ya. Have a good day.
You, too.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is the public hearing for amendment to the ordinance twenty oh three.
And I gave you all a copy of that, so you you should have it in since copy there. Basically, this is the one for the UT, UTVs. ATVs, UTVs, all those kinds of people.
Right.
Just to state that the annual renewal fee is gonna be thirty dollars.
Sticking with one fee.
And it becomes effective January one. So today, we just needed to open the public hearing, discuss it. I received nothing, um. The second time it's been published. I still haven't heard anything from anybody.
Right.
And.
You won't tell us then.
Yeah, and then we'll go public hearing and get the first reading.
Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Written. Nine fourteen.
Did you make a motion?
Yes, you did.
She did.
Yep.
Okay, I'll second.
Sorry, Richard, I need to yell.
We've got a motion and a second to open the public hearing at nine fourteen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay. No written, no oral, no any comments?
I have nothing from anyone.
Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion, close the hearing at nine. Let's go to nine fifteen.
We've got a motion to close the public hearing at nine fifteen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the first reading of the.
So basically, that's what you're gonna put now is the first reading and, um, I think then we could have the second. I I don't see any controversial on this, so I would recommend that we do the second and third reading next week and approve it, so it's all done and over. You guys are in favor of that?
I'm in favor of it. Do we need to read this briefly?
No.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the first reading of the amendment ordinance twenty oh three? And the ord, the, just again, for those of you that listen, um, we, the initial fee is thirty dollars, renewal fee is thirty dollars. That's the only change, so.
I make a motion for having the approval of the first reading of the ordinance twenty dash oh three.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Vinton, second by Crouch to approve their first reading to amendment ordinance twenty oh three. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right. Dem low and them are not here. Didn't we tell them on nine thirty?
We did say nine thirty.
That's fine, we can, we can move on on a couple of things.
Okay, so, um, oh, the next one, I don't know if he's coming in or Jill's just doing it, so, um.
Do you need to go get her?
Um, yeah, if you want to. I'm waiting to hear back from, uh, Nada and and or Tyler to go ahead and, uh, we're definitely gonna, um, table the asbestos because he did not have enough.
Yeah, I, yeah, I saw that. And the change orders? Okay.
I think, and I think also the other part, but I'm trying to get confirmation from them because I talked to Matt Wood yesterday and he sent a draft to Nada. Tyler would rather, since he's been dealing with it all, and I believe she as well, would rather he handled it because that's what she said. I don't know why I'm in.
How does that affect our ninety days, though? Or how does it affect his ninety days?
Um, it would.
By us dragging our feet, are we gonna stop the house moving?
Well, it, he's still gotta wait for his DNR permits, so that's the second. Um, would be when his DNR permits actually come into play. He's actually able to start demoing then. He can't, apparently can't demo the first five until the DNR riposte, so we've got a little leeway, so if they get something figured out.
As long as we're not to hold up, I'm good with it.
Right. That's my understanding and that's what I.
So what's the DNR doing?
Well, they have to have that DNR permit on all the.
Good morning.
How are you?
Just fine.
I've heard this has caused a little ruckus there in Silver City.
Oh, it has? I hadn't heard that.
Oh, Westfall, that's a bar.
Are other people interested in it as well, or?
Well, he's, there's a wall that's weak and the next door neighbors are wanting to get it fixed on their own behalf and he says, this is what I do and they won't let him in to fix the wall and.
Don't let who in to fix it?
The Westfall or what is, what's, who's the?
Don, um, Don McKee and Karen Westfall. McKee.
That's what they do for a living?
No, Ramsey.
Oh, oh, I gotcha, I gotcha.
He's a, he fabs, uh, he's a fabricator.
He does what?
A liar.
Sure can.
Is this the same one that, is this that same piece of?
Yeah.
Richard.
Yes.
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 Yes. And then, yes.
Didn't want it.
Why did he back out?
Because he took on the building. Part of the building, part of the building wall was on it and he didn't want it.
Uh, well. No, he didn't realize he had to pay some back taxes and subsequent taxes and all of that stuff. And so then, when I presented him a bill for more money, he decided he didn't wanna, didn't wanna pay it.
I know Jim Schnorr is interested in it, so it just gets to be a little bit bigger.
Well, today, if we do this, then then, uh, he'll have to go through, uh, Terrell to, because he's gonna pay the back taxes and he's gonna pay the the tax sale on it.
Well, McKee still owns it.
Right, uh, well, yeah, and it's a county held tax sale since two thousand and and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And he'd like to purchase the tax sale. He's agreed to pay the tax sale in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six dollars. He's also agreed to pay the past due and current taxes in the amount of six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And a tax sale certificate fee of twenty and a reassignment fee of ten dollars. So he's willing to pay me eleven hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then, once we have the Board of Supervisors' approval, he will pay me the money and then he can start the process to take deed on this parcel. He will, he'll have to give the the notice to everybody who has any interest in this property. I told him that I suggested get a lawyer and make sure there are, are, uh, no liens on the property, which I think he's gonna do the abstract company. The lawyer suggested doing abstract company to make sure there's no liens on that, so I told him I would come to you today on his behalf and see if you would agree to the eleven sixty-three.
He's gonna pay it, bring it on.
Yep, so he's.
Usually we're abating.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but we're not abating it. It's wonderful. We don't get this very often, Jill.
Nope.
Good for him.
Okay.
I make a motion, absolutely, woo hoo. Yay, eleven sixty-three.
Good motion for Terrell, by Vinton, for Terrell Ramsey to pay the back taxes and tax sale and everything that is owed on it to date to Mills County.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
You good with that, Richard?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
If it's made, I'll second, I promise.
Perfect. We've got a motion and a second to approve Terrell Ramsey to purchase the vacant lot in Silver City, which is lot forty-five of Greenwood Edition. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none of those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Get her done.
Okay, well, do.
Yay.
He already turned in his W nine for it and everything, so all I need to do is collect the money. He offered to pay me the other day and let me go to the board first to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, get it, get it formalized.
Yep, so, okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Jill.
You're welcome.
So any other great news, bad news, okay news?
I sent out delinquent notices and, uh, past, pen, past due notices and a lot of people have. Um, this year, for some reason, a lot of mortgage companies did not pick up the drainage on people's stuff.
They never do.
And they're small parcels. One year, they'll pick it up, the person will come in and pay it. I have to send the money back, so that, so, okay. A a guy told me almost every other year, he goes through this. One year, they pay the small parcel, the next year, they don't pay the small parcel. So we had a lot of six dollar drainages and small parcels hanging out there that people came in and have paid, so, uh, that has brought in a lot of revenue the last. They were, went out November second and we have, they've, a lot of, I don't know, mortgage companies, I don't know if it, it's so confusing because we didn't. The governor had let the taxes go without penalty till, what was it, almost June, and then I sent out notices in July of delinquent taxes for for March. So then they paid like in August, so then they think that paid their September taxes, so we've had a lot of confusion there, but I think I've, I finally got through to most of them. They were gonna bring their cancel check and approve to me and I said, if you will look at that, it paid nineteen and twenty, not twenty and twenty-one, so.
It is, that is so confusing.
It's very confusing and then being a year in arrears is confusing as well, so, yes, it does, it's very confusing, but they have been very good about, uh, people that got the past dues have been, been in and a lot of them have paid, so. I was gonna, before I came in, I was gonna try to run the pay and do report and see how much was due out there and it just didn't happen.
It's so frustrating.
Interesting to look at.
Yeah, it is, so, so, yeah. And uh other than that, we have no support from the state tomorrow, so it could prove interesting, the state is calling tomorrow a holiday too, so if we have any problems in driver's license or in motor vehicle, we can't call the state.
See you next week.
To get help and you know how that's gonna be.
They're gonna think they're closed anyway, so they're not gonna come in.
Yeah, the state gave them Wednesday, Thursday and Friday.
And then the like.
They're nicer than we are.
And like the driver's license, they work a half day Saturday, so they have that off as well, but they're gonna be open a half a day on Monday, cause that's normally the day they're they're closed, so, yeah.
Wow. So I'll probably see.
I need to get mine renewed too.
Are you still not interested?
No, I haven't, I say, I need a piece of, I need a payroll stub or something that I keep. When you hand them to me, I usually toss them away instead of.
You gonna email me? I can email you another one, and she'll just.
Oh, I'm sure I have it somewhere.
Yeah, sure.
You can't find your self security card?
No, and I can't get any one, I've tried. I tried a whole summer, three, four years ago and couldn't get one.
Hey, Terrell?
Yeah.
I know it's hard right now.
Hard.
With uh, yes, I hope it because they're still closed. I'm here, Richard.
Yeah, hey, did I miss Ken Demlow or?
No, he, he's not till nine thirty, sorry.
Yeah.
We just kinda moved, you know how we do.
Alright, alright.
Yeah. Thanks, Jill. I'll be in.
I'll talk to Terrell and tell him everything's okay and be okay, give us the money, honey. Yeah, tell him, tell him if you can't make it in tomorrow and then we'll be back open on Monday. Okay, sounds good.
Um accept the county TIP appropriation.
Okay, so every year before December one, we have to certify our TIP amount. You don't see it in front of you, you will, but I had to wait for the state auditor. I have to, the state auditors gotta get me some paperwork so that I can actually put it, but you just need to approve the um the cer- the TIP appropriation for twenty-one and then accept the urban renewal report, which is also due December one and will be in your presence very soon.
Can we combine that?
No, you can.
No.
Those two separate. I accept, make a motion to approve the county TIP appropriation for twenty twenty-one. Richard?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the, to accept the county TIP appropriation for twenty twenty-one, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Now the urban renewal report.
You wanna make a motion, Richard?
Well, sure.
Okay, we'll let you.
What do you, what do you want, yes, no, what?
Uh, well, we'd like you to make a motion to approve the urban renewal report.
I'll make a motion to approve the urban renewal report.
Thank you, sir.
And I seconded, did a good job, Richard.
We've got a motion and a second to accept the urban renewal report, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Alright.
Okay, we are going to um table the asbestos contract, change orders and demolition contract until Tyler can actually be here in person. I'm gonna go call Matt. We're, we're tabling those, Richard, because um Tyler would like to be here in person to do.
And that's, and that's fine with me, I'd like to be there also, so.
Yes, okay.
No problem.
I'm gonna go call Matt Woods and then let's go. Morning, Chris, good morning, Ken.
Morning. Morning.
They're big and ears.
Jeremy, are you on?
Apparently not.
Maybe not, okay.
Oh, there's you, oh, there's you.
What's that?
Alright, guys, the reason I put this on the agenda was just to get everyone on the same page again, um we did make a decision last week to have uh H R Green do some design on this thing, um after speaking with Jeff again, um he uh, I'll give a little feedback, that's alright. Um they have most, if not all of the county already in a preliminary, if not final design phase. They just haven't moved forward on it, I was not aware of that. Instead of me being the middleman, I wanted to bring everyone to the table and let's discuss it, so um, I'm open. Um Carol, anything you wanna say, Ken or Chris or Jeff, you, anyone wanna go first?
Well, the only thing that um I think we need to decide on is based on the route that we propose, is that something that the county um approves or accepts.
I would like to see that again. If, is there a pop-up or something you can share with us? I, I, I think the supervisors need to sit down and uh and actually pick a route, if I, or most of our routes. Um I do understand, or I'm of the understanding that we all wanna go uh down Barris picking up from where Western Iowa Networks has left off. Um either north on, what is that, two hundred and forty-third, two hundred and forty-fifth and then down Brothers, is that right?
Yeah, Chris, do you have, can we share a screen?
I do, I'll be getting pulled up here once. Patrick, can you make me a presenter?
Yep.
I was gonna open up the uh.
Oh.
I was gonna do two screens.
Are you seeing it, Chris? There, there we go. So that's Chris's.
Can I see on my screen?
Yep.
Yep. Could you make it bigger or kind of?
No, that's not us.
Oh, that's us, never mind.
Well, that's kind of the, the last thing we discussed, I know, um you know, stopping it, not continuing down on the Silver City block top at oh fifty-five. Heading back west on Gaffin Avenue and then coming back into Glundwood, like Jim uses new subdivision.
Can you pan that up, I can't see right around here on Glundwood. Now, I think we wanted to come down east instead of two hundred and forty-fifth, I think we wanted to come down two hundred and fiftieth so we could go by the mega site. And then Ingram. I don't know if you can see our, he can't see our mouse when we're moving, can he?
I can't point anything for him.
We're seeing the screen right now. But we can switch.
But I think that's something that the board would, Richard and Carol and I need to sit down and argue this out, but I think the two hundred and forty-fifth leg, I can't quite see it. Yeah, I think two hundred and fiftieth would continue straight down to go past the mega site and then come to Jim, see Jim uses through Ingram. That would be our preference right now.
From that north.
Uh.
They just continued on two fiftieth here.
Yes, and and then go to use the subdivision, down Ingram. There you go, yep, 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 so you would eliminate that two hundred and forty-fifth leg that went by the school. Right.
One thing that, Chris, you'll have, you'll be crossing that railroad twice.
Right. We wanna, we wanna make sure this gets to the, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it's a must, if not more than a necessity to get fiber down next to the mega site. That's something that our economic development director's brought up and uh it's in several others, so I don't see two hundred and forty-fifth getting any development as long as Beermans own it, so that would be, I don't, I don't know that you would catch any customers there anyway, guys. It now or in the future, I don't see them developing at all, they do, they don't wanna sell. No matter what, yeah, they, they just don't want to. But other than that, I think it looks pretty good and yes, you know, that's what we discussed, but this board has not discussed that yet.
So Jeff, how would that be crossing the railroad twice?
You zoom in.
Yeah, you're gonna cross it.
On two fiftieth right here.
Yeah.
Yep. And then they get back to just use the subdivision, we have to drop it here again.
Right, right. And it would be, but that's, that's something that we, I think we've all agreed on here.
That's fine, I mean, I mean, we uh, I think the one route that Chris just planned on was just to try to get to use.
Sure.
Use the S F way, so. So I mean, I guess, we have, have staked all this route. Now, if we change and come back down to fifty, and if, you know, if there's no other changes or if you want other changes, I mean, um, you know, I don't know what Ken's proposing, but I mean, we have staked uh the communities of Silver City, Mineola and then basically all the other routes um that are highlighted here on Google.
Right.
So there is patients with that. You know, we just need to know of those and then solidify and think that plan.
Right.
Um. And then I, I think, you know, for Ken, um understanding the scope of work, um you know, for, for Ken versus what you know, we're gonna do and uh just coming up with those um parameters in regards to uh that you guys will obviously have to have a contract and go out to bid and do all that. Now, I don't know, Ken, if, if we can stake all this and solely modify it, would it be easier for you just to review those plans and then just give your sample of approval versus, you know, going back out and staking it again? I have to move on that cost as part of what, you know, we planned on doing and so not passing that on to the county, I'm just trying to find ways to stretch the county's money.
Right.
Further input fiber in the ground.
Um. So Jeff, with, with having staked some routes, um.
What are you doing, buddy?
So have, so, so there's, you know, there's, there's the steps of, you know, doing the walkout, which you may be calling staking there, but, but doing the walkout, you know, seeing where it would actually go. Um and then actual, and then doing the actual, you know, detailed design for construction and permit. Um, uh and, and then taking that on to an RFP for, for the construction and negotiating with uh with, you know, working through the details with the construction.
There you go.
So there's, you know, so there's, there's, and then oversight of construction, so there's all those pieces, um. What we had originally thought that we would do was for, not for the fiber to the home in, in Mineola, not for the fiber to the home in, in uh um, in Silver City. But we're thinking we would do the, the walkout on those areas just to verify the route, verify that, you know, all what you're doing walkout. Um and then do a final design for, for the county's line. Um and then go ahead and do the, the plans for that, for permitting and uh we, we talked with the county uh that it probably just be potentially, you know, however many permits that could be, it may just be one or maybe, you know, a couple, but um, and then have those plans ready for the con, for the, for the construction bid. Um, we were, just so that there was a uh, if the county's investing a million dollars, the question is, how does? How does the, how does the county, um how, how is there, the county looking out for for what they're investing in, you know, what, how, what's their, you know, how are they getting done, what they're investing in? Instead of just writing a check for a million dollars and saying, okay, you know, here we go from there. So we're wanting to have that, um working with your connections and working with your high use spec so that, you know, when you do end up, which the plan would be for you guys to end up taking it over, over how many, you know, specified amount of time. But how do you have, how do, how does the county have at least a little bit of, we're investing this, therefore we're uh, this is how we're, we're having oversight on it, or this is how we're involved in it. That's what we are trying to, to sort through. Um.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, I think that can happen. Um, you know, the ride out or we call it staking, basically going out and planning every location along that route, you know, and, and staking it so that um they have the footages, they also predetermine whether or not this particular route, um, you know, they put the unit together, whether it's being born, so they're gonna be louder and constructed or a combination of both. So they assemble all that stuff and they'll put those, quickly those draft designs together. Um, and I think, you know, if H R Green wanted to review those and give its blessing or suggest modifications or changes to that um versus, you know, having to replicate that based on what, you know, we constructed, our engineers to go off and do, um. And then there's that whole contract administration, I think you definitely can go forward with, you know, publishing an RFP. Um we can get you all of our contractors, you know, that are on the bidder's list. Um because I think that's one thing that we can bring to the table, so hopefully we get some good competitive bids for it. Um, and then putting together a contract, whether or not, you know, we use R U S's by fifteen, they're contract form. Um for all of our, the county wants to.
Detach the camera on their side, they're gonna have to re-add their camera. We'd have to stop and start over basically.
Or if you use us in different, uh you can propose whatever to the county, you know, you can administer that contract and do oversight uh on all that, you know, that work. We would hope that we could gain the same contractor, you know, efficiency to be able to do, you know, our portion of the work. Um, we've done that.
More than.
Yeah, yeah, we've done that before, but um they are, it is that we have done with B J and, and Nacogdoian and Faragut. You know, we have two different contracts, uh because we're, we have two different parent companies that operate those services in there. But the contractor did it all as one, so, you know, they have certain timelines between each contract and then I think that's what can be done for, for this job too, so I just, um, you know, what we've done so far with, with our engineer of actually putting together that plan and the route, if we need to modify it, if it's a cost that we're gonna take on that would be county and that's why I'm just, I'm accepting to say that let us do that work and hopefully the county can then put his money more towards fiber and miles, uh what we're trying to get done, because I know we have a budget, but until the bids come back in, you know, and overs, you know, budget, then, then we have to make changes or we have to, you know, make decisions on what's gonna get built and what's not gonna get built, but.
Yeah. And, and Carol and Richard and, yeah, Carol and Richard and Lonnie, um you know, what, what Jeff uh talking about there is if, when I sent the proposal into you all, I broke out uh several things. And what, what I broke out was the uh actual design, which in, which includes staking or walkout, you know, we all use different terms, but but that, that's the same thing, so, so it, it included that design. But then it also included um the uh RFP process and the construction oversight process. And so what Jeff is talking about is if we looked at our contract and said, okay, so we'll, so, so if Jeff's team did the plan and, and did, did the walkout and the plan, or the, the, the staking and the plan, then if we, uh if they gave those to us and we reviewed them to make sure that they, that they, and, and Jeff, there's, I don't have any doubt that they would be good, I mean, I'm not, that, that's really not the, I'm sure they would be, but, but for us. would be good. I mean, I'm not, that, that's really not a, I'm sure they would be, but, but for us to review them so that there is kind of that, you're investing a million dollars, you've reviewed what the design's gonna be. And then we took that through construction and to Jeff's point, just made sure that that all aligned with construction, construction for, um, for the, for, for what you're invested in. And that does have that separation. It does have the, um, the reviews, you know, so that you can always say that and know that you had, uh, had your eyes on it, you know. And again, I, I don't think anybody would do anything wrong. This is just making sure that everybody's on the same page.
Right, 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 right. And, and, and there's, it, it's not a trust issue or anything like that on either party. It's, 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 it's just, uh, I think this board wants to see ha- have a third party, you know, throw their opinion in, do some oversight. I mean, that's, 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 that's what I've gathered.
And, and it doesn't cost that much more. To Jeff's point, you know, all those things have to be done. And what he's just talking about is, is how to make sure there's not a duplication, so. Hey, Jeff, can I ask you a quick question? We'll, we'll get back to that, so, so, I mean, that's obviously an interesting thing, but, but i- if you, in the very middle of what you have up there, um, that there, should there be a connection on that, on that west leg, um, so just north of your cursor, right there?
Right here.
Could there be a connection so that there's a full circle? Yeah, just out of curiosity. Uh, the way, the way this is designed, it, these, this area is served out of Silver City. And this area to, to the north here is served out of Mineola, different cabinets, just splitter cabinets. Okay. Okay. I was just curious about that.
Okay. Think we planned for like a five-seventy-six splitter cabinet in each location.
Correct, yep.
So it's more than what, you know, is actually city served on the route, on the route, but it does give us the expansion to go beyond all, you know, these areas for future growth, and so that's, that's why there's, we're having a hut that's gonna be in place up in Lake Ohio for our cares award. And then Mineola, Silver, it would be basically a splitter cabinet being served off of that hut.
I can't see it.
Hopefully, we wanna get back to, you know, our, our hut that, that we live. So we can actually bring, interact that, uh, that electronics that are up in the same pot still.
Gotcha. So you still have your redundancy through, or, I mean, you still have your connection, because it goes Mineola down to Silver City and back over to the west and then down to thirty-four. So you still get, so you still get down to thirty-four. Gotcha, okay.
Yep.
Um, sorry, didn't take a detour there, but, um, uh, so, so those, um, and, and Lonnie, I think, and Carol, I can't remember how, if, how we talked about that, but Lonnie, I think I might have mentioned those, the possibility that Jeff was talking about of, of how the contract, you know, stuff could work. I think I might have even mentioned that, that, that there are some options there. Um, so if, if we were gonna divide it up that way, do you, um, Lonnie and Carol, do you, Richard, you want me to just kinda go back through our proposal to, to clarify that? Would that be?
Yeah, it'd be good.
And to get that back to you?
Yeah. Yep. We, we just wanna move forward, you know, as quick as possible. Um, you know, the state's starting to lean on us and get the money spent. Uh, Western Iowa's already working, you know, they've already got their crews here, you know, putting stuff in, so they don't wanna send them home and bring them back. It's, we're just trying to push. I mean, you guys keep pushing us, we'll keep pushing you and then we'll get it done.
And I guess what?
Well, I can have that redone. I, I can have that reworking back to you by, I mean, uh, we're not talking a major effort there. I mean, I'm talking like a day or two to have that back to you to be done, so.
And I think the biggest thing is, is if this route looks acceptable, I think we can sit and try to put some ballpark pricing, budgeting to it, bring it back to you guys, the county today, is this, is this something that we absorb? Is this something we can handle?
Right.
If it's more or less, we just wanna make sure what fits within your guys' budget.
Right.
Because if it's higher, then we need to figure out, okay, we're not gonna do as much.
Right, right. Yeah, that needs to be done soon, so thank you.
And you can work through Ken to tell him, you know, with your guys' agreement, what your budget is, and then between Ken and, and Chris and I, we can try to sit down and figure out a route that fits within that budget. And then hopefully try to, you know, put those stacks together and actually come on and get, okay, with the bids coming. The sooner we can get out to bid with that, I mean.
Yeah.
A lot of this work's done, the staking is done, the design, if we have some modifications, uh, we can make those, Ken can review them. Uh, we can put together some budgetary estimates to do a wrap, but, uh, and then come to an agreement on whatever our contractual agreement will be between us and the county. And then let, let's get out to bid, do with our numbers, something like that.
I agree, I agree.
And we can push to getting out to bid, yeah. When we can push to getting out to bid, bid fast, I mean, we, we, with, uh, Jeff, all we would need is the design to get out to bid, so that's, you know. Hey, Jeff, just for the counties, just for the county to, uh, to know, um, based on your suppliers and, and some of that could come down to contractors, but how long are we looking as a lead time for fiber?
Well, just to give you, um, kind of the, um, for the CARES Act we're doing, go over on Deacon. You know, there's, there's this scare tactic that fiber is out there, you know, for thirty-some, you know, weeks possibly. Um, we were able with our contractor, I think we were six to eight weeks, we were able to get fiber. Our two-eighty-eight fiber took us the longest and I think that's being shipped today or this week. Chris, was it?
Being shipped today, so the biggest, the biggest thing is we, we use ribbon fiber. Um, a lot of times loose tube is, is what they're saying long lead times on right now. Um, so fortunate, we are a little ahead of the curve on that, but we are, we are starting to see a lot of long lead times. So getting this done sooner rather than later is the key. Yeah, so supervisors, just so you all, uh, just to translate that, um, our longest lead time thing in all of this could be fiber now. I, I'm really glad to hear you guys have some good, good sources for that, but there's, there are a lot of places where it, depending on the type of fiber they want, are getting up into the sixth lead time. Um, so, you know, keeping, keeping the foot on the gas pedal's important because it's, I think it's just gonna keep getting longer if we're not careful, so.
Right.
I mean, pedestals and vaults are all long lead times, you know, like, and, and usually never was that way before, so I think the sooner that we can get something put together and it's back and get out the bid, the sooner that once spring comes, when we wanna start constructing, if we don't have any lead time or worries about having that material, so.
Should we put this on the agenda again next week just in case, or?
Yeah, I think, I think if we can try to solidify the, the, the route and try to get some kind of agreements on that, then I think, you know, we can start, we can, and Chris and I, we can start working on the estimated budget and making sure that.
Yep.
That would be great.
It's gonna be much based on what we think and can, and give you the input on it today, yep, I, I agree or I disagree. That way you guys have an idea of, based on this, this plan, what the true cost could be based on what was taken away.
Thank you. If you have questions, uh, you'll feel free to send me an email or give me a call too, and I can pass it on to Carol and she can let the other supervisors know.
Yep, and then, uh, I know we sent you guys kind of our Alisa Own Agreement, and whether or not you guys, through your county attorney or anybody else, if you guys have input or suggestions, you know, we'll take that line back or if you guys wanna have a discussion on it, you know, at some point. So it'd be nice to try to solidify that also, just as well as Ken, you know, I'm sure he's trying to do that with his contract.
Sure, sure. Can, can you send that to me again, Jeff, just to make sure I got the, a copy of it and then I'll forward it on?
Yeah, I can do that.
Good.
Alright, so we'll put you guys on for next week. How's that?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just keep this on the agenda until we're, until we don't need to.
Okay.
All good.
Alrighty.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good day, baby.
You too.
No more than ten.
Eight.
Eight? See you. Alright.